Now, we're good. We're live? Madam Manager, we're live?
Yes, sir, we are.
All right. It is Wednesday, February 1st, 2023. It is 7:30 PM. This is a regular City Commission meeting of the City of West Miami. This meeting is called to order. For the invocation.
Please rise. Let's bow our head and pray that the Lord guide us always and that he satisfies the needs that need to be met during this commission meeting. We pray so that he may strengthen our elected body as they make decisions for the greater good of the city and its residents. We pray for a fruitful City Commission meeting. And Father, please guide all of us so that this meeting can be productive. Keep us all honest and humble. We pray for our law enforcement officers and first responders so that they return home safely. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please stand if you pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rule call.
Yes, rule call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candy Blanca. Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Um, next item?
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for December 13th, 2022, special commission meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And January 18th, 2023, regular commission meeting?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, and Mayor, Mr. Mayor, may I make a request for a new item to be added to the agenda on item nine on the committee reports? Item, appointment of member to the Recreation Advisory Board by Committee Chairman Chavez.
Okay, um, we need a force this vote to add it to the agenda. Do we need a motion or just no? You know what, let's keep it clean. Can we get a motion to add that to the agenda, the appointment? This is not for the item. It's just to add the item to the agenda. You have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion or a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item added. Thank you.
Next item.
Item five, public comments.
Is there anyone here for public comments?
No.
Seeing none?
Yes.
Next item.
Item six, report of the City Manager.
Thank you. This evening, I have a brief verbal report. I just reported to Vice Mayor Blanes that 100% of our street signs have been completed. They have been refurbished. And, um, we now go on to the next phase of the welcome to the City of West Miami signs. And those will be installed very shortly. Um, I think you'll be very pleased with the product at the end of the day. So, we're getting there. The next item is, uh, that we have several bids now up on DemandStar, which is the tool that we use to publish the, the, uh, capital improvement projects that we have out for proposals. The first one is the tree study. That involves a grant from the State of Florida Department of Agriculture. And that is for the, uh, tree study citywide. Hopefully, we can, uh, get some good recommendations as we move forward with our tree city designation and what to do with those trees that are, um, that have outgrown their space, the canopy, the way we keep them, um, how to maintain our healthy trees and basically to have a professional survey our inventory. So that's coming up pretty soon. The bid is out, so we expect that by March 15th, we'll have a recommendation to you. The next item is, we have, excuse me, two bids out for the racquetball and pickleball courts. Uh, that is a product of the Recreation Advisory Board led by, uh, Commissioner Ivan Chavez or chaired by Commissioner Ivan Chavez. And we also have the, um, I'm sorry. The, uh, RFP out for the lights for the baseball field at the West Miami Recreation Center. So these three projects will be coming to you with a recommendation in the very near future. We're using the tool labeled DemandStar and they will tally the bids and we'll give you the, the summary of the bids at a commission meeting as soon as these bids are received. Um, one last item. I just want to go on record to report that today is my 40th, 40th year with the City of West Miami. So...
How many years?
Forty years as a...
Four zero?
Four zero.
The four?
I'm not going to ask you.
Forty years.
Should we got some patelitos or something?
I know.
I thought you had some kind of celebration here for now.
Doffis.
Mr. Pena.
After, after the meeting.
It's a, it's a party for the celebration of the manager. It's a, it's a 40 years working for the city.
Long time.
Candy, okay Candy, what's your invitation?
But she started when she was 10 years old.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Someone has to say it, right?
So it's been, uh, it's been a great experience. The, uh, thank you.
We're very happy for, uh, for that anniversary. So I don't know. Another 40 or?
I had my 47th wedding anniversary yesterday and my 40th with employment of the city. So I'm, I guess you can say that I'm, I'm a creature of habit. Let's leave it at that.
I want to make, uh, one, uh, observation here. Between our Public Works Director, Juan Pena, our Major Pete Delgado, our Chief, uh, Carlos Avila, our City Attorney, uh, Pepe Villalobos, our City Manager, even our, uh, our Young Secretary. The years of experience, uh, that we have surpassed probably three centuries.
And Luli. Luli just had her 40, 40 years as well.
And our Chief Financial Officer. So, and well, I'm, you know, this, the commission is...
Mr. Pena has been... Commissioner Blanes, Mr. Pena has been working here for 45 years?
Forty-three.
Forty-three?
Forty-three.
Forty-three.
So, so that's, that's 83 years of experience right there. Right there. And in law enforcement and in the legal field, um, I mean, we have years and years and years. So we're lucky. We're lucky that we have people...
Don't look to me. Look Candy.
You were looking when I used to come in, even in pajamas.
Yes. And yell and scream at me. And I used to hide right there, under, under the, under the dyes.
I was real worse.
All righty.
You guys were playing with Legos.
Yeah, I was, I was here playing with Legos. Um, the, uh, uh, next, what do you have? Anything else in your report, Madam Manager?
That's it. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item seven, report of the City Attorney.
There's no report by the City Attorney.
Thank you. Next item.
Item eight, report of the City Engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Um, I don't have a report today. I do have a few items on the agenda that we'll report on individually. Uh, the only item I will touch upon is regarding the traffic study. There was a mayor posed a question regarding status of the permit process with the county. Uh, I don't have an answer tonight, but I will follow up with the city's traffic engineer that submitted it and we'll have a response. Touch on each item as we go through the agenda.
All righty. Next item.
Item nine, committee reports on the communal reports, appointment of member to the Recreation Advisory Board by Committee Chairman Ivan Chavez Jr.
Go ahead.
So we have a vacancy on the board and, uh, we have a few residents that are eager to get on boards and, and they're excited to see where, the direction that we're going in with this community. Um, there's one in particular that I want to appoint tonight and it's Christina Verona. Um, she's very motivated and eager, like I said, to get on this board and, and see what she can do to help us as a commission as well as the city to keep moving forward. So, excited about that appointment.
Perfect. She's a, she's a very active resident. Uh, let's, I don't think we need it, but let's just do it anyways. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner, if you have an address for Ms. Verona so that we can send her a letter, welcome, welcome her to the Recreation Advisory Board.
Perfect. Yes, ma'am. I'll get that for you.
Thank you.
Her contact information.
All right, next item.
Item 10, unfinished business known this evening. And, uh, and Mr. Mayor, if we may request to take out a border, item 11, item 11I and J?
Yes.
Yes, item, uh, 11I, request for appeal of decision by the Planning and Zoning Board on application for sign permit presented on January 24th, 2023 before the Board. Property address 1240 Southwest 57th Avenue, West Miami, Florida, 3144. Business name, MVP Jury &amp; Pawn LLC. Property owner, Sandra Alvarez.
Um, could you do me a favor and, and read the resolution as well?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami reversing sustaining the decision of the Planning and Zoning Board to deny the request, to deny or approve the request of MVP Jury &amp; Pawn property owner Sandra Alvarez for a signed application permit at the property located at 1240 Southwest 57th Avenue, West Miami, Florida that has been recommended by staff providing for effective date.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Good evening. On the 24th of January, uh, the owner of MVP Pawn requested to add additional signage to his jewelry store. And he went before the City, uh, Planning and Zoning Board. And although my memo recommended the, the approval because of the current laws that we have in our zoning ordinance, the board voted against his, uh, sign request. So it's here tonight for you all to see the request and reverse the, uh, appeal it on, reverse it on appeal if you agree.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, Mr. Pena, is, is this it?
The words buy, sell, trade on the, on the glass.
So this is what they want?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Cuadra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Name and address for the record.
Uh, Guillermo Cuadra with offices at 8200 Northwest 41st Street in the City of Doral.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, always, always a pleasure to be here in the City of West Miami. With me is Anthony Garcia, uh, with MVP, um, Pawn. Uh, the applicant. Essentially, I want to bring to your attention the part of what I think is some, some confusion that took place during the, the Planning and Zoning, uh, Board meeting. Uh, essentially, the, uh, the discussion was that, uh, by Mr. Pena, that in fact, the applicant does meet the, your code requirements, uh, that it only occupies 15 of, I believe, 48 feet allowed, square feet allowed of signage. We're only using 15 square feet. Uh, and, and thus, Mr. Pena was recommending approval. Staff recommends approval. Part of the discussion that ensued had to do with aesthetics. And the question was whether aesthetics was part of the requirements of the code. And I believe Mr. Attorney, uh, and Mr. Pena both said that aesthetics is now part of the, uh, of the elements considering the, the signage application. Again, I will profit of you that we meet the regards on the requirements of the code as outlined by Mr. Pena's memo. And, and as you can see, we don't occupy all the area that could be under your code. It's only 15 square feet as opposed to 48 and it is basically this simple lettering. With that, we are here. If you have any, any other questions, then I will, uh, respectfully, uh, request your, your, you overturn the, the denial. Thank you.
Yeah, I, this, this site used to have, uh, much larger lettering, right? And it was, it was taken, it was taken back to, you know, it was full screen and now it's just, because it was, uh, I, I'm familiar that this, this, this wasn't, this wasn't originally owned by the, by the applicant, right?
No, it was purchased basically, I believe, someone towards the middle of last year and, and they...
Who was that put the full screens? It was...
It was the prior, the prior jewelry shop, yes.
Right, so, so the current applicant wants to take that off and just leave the lettering for the buy, sell, trade.
Exactly. And, and essentially, we want to make sure that we're in compliance with, with, with the city's, uh, requirements. We know that along that corridor, not every property may have secured a permit, but, but notwithstanding that, uh, MVP, they're, they're really a good, uh, corporate partner to the city. They want to go ahead and, and be here, be successful here. And, and, and again, it's just doing things by the book. Uh, we follow the requirements of the code, um, as, as pointed out by Mr. Pena. And, and simply the confusion was whether or not aesthetics, because I believe some of the board members may not have liked the lettering. Uh, but, but I submit to you that it is not one of the elements for consideration, uh, for, for approval.
Yeah, and, and just while I have you here, I, uh, I noticed that, and I, I, I agree with you. I've, I've, yeah, the aesthetics. I mean, the reality is if, if you want aesthetics to be part of the code, you have to make it part of the code. Uh, and that's our duty up here that if you have to change the law, we, we can change it, but not today and not with the current application. The, the, uh, the, the lettering down below, uh, those are luxury watch makes, correct? That's being added new, right? That's not currently, that's not, that wasn't on the full scale, right?
No, that, this is, this is, what you have in, in, in that illustration is basically the, the signage that, that would be installed.
Okay, got it.
Now, I, I have a question.
Uh, okay, let's go, let's go Suarez, Vice Mayor Chavez. Go ahead.
Well, I have a copy, black and white.
Yes, sir.
You know, that is terrible because they present, you know, obscure picture. I see you have, you have a color that I can't appreciate. I mean, this is more the reality. Some, the... Those are letters, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Only letters. There is not another...
There's no lighting or nothing. Just stickers, letters?
But there is no another component that obscure the view. There is nothing that... Just the letters.
And, and essentially, the, the allowable, uh, space is, you see the yellow lines? It would be above the yellow line, but we're not occupying the space. It's just exactly where the lettering is.
I see that. And the letters more the, the orientation are vertical.
Correct.
I mean, it's not the horizontal that obscure you. This is vertical letters?
Yeah, it's just stickers stuck to the, to the window.
Talking to the mic if you're...
There are actually vinyl stickers stuck to the windows. So it's not 3D or nothing. It's just...
Say your name and, uh, address, please.
Oh, my name is Anthony Garcia, representing MVP Jury &amp; Pawn at 1240 Southwest 57th Avenue.
I see that here is much better than here.
Yeah, we, we got rid of all the stuff that was there before. Right now, it's blank and then I just wanted to put that lettering for the people of the community to know that we're actually there because the, the property has been, the, the shop has been closed for almost a year and a half. So it's been hard to get customers in because thinking that it's closed, you know, so. I wanted just to let them know and let them know that the hours of operation, that's it. Nothing much more.
So this is less than the, than the percentage request?
The 30% would be like up to 48 inches and I'm only using them in almost 24 from the, yeah, 48 square feet. I'm only using the top. And I want to make it look clean, you know, for the community. I'm not trying to put flashing lights or neon lights. It's just the stickers and to, to let them know what we do. Give it a new appeal.
You want to say, because the black and white is terrible.
And, and the lettering will be white?
White.
It's, it's white.
It's all white lettering. So, and the window's clear. So you can... Between lettering, it's clear. It's not going to be black. It's just between all the letters is clear. It's just, the only thing that's taking care is the actual letter.
The letter, okay. Mr. Pena, so, so it's, uh, legal and lawful, uh, what they're doing, right? According to our ordinance?
Yes, sir. They meet the requirements of the...
And basically, the planning and zoning denied it because...
On aesthetics.
Aesthetics.
Okay. Which is not part of the ordinance.
Which is not...
And, and let me just make a comment on that. I, I, you know, I, I know we've, we've probably reversed the planning and zoning board more in the last two years than we have in the past. Uh, but I don't, I don't view that as a, as a bad thing. I actually, even, even in this case where I think obviously there's the issue of whether they took into account something that maybe they shouldn't. I actually appreciate, uh, the planning and zoning board being aggressive. Um, it, it kind of makes our life easier at the end of the day. Even though it sounds like it's making it harder because we've got four fifth votes to, 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 uh, to overturn, it actually makes our lives easier at the end of the day because they do a lot of vetting for us. Um, and that's, I kind of like that they're being very aggressive and they're being very, they're taking their, their role seriously enough to reject a few applicants even when, uh, even when we reverse. So, um, I, I don't, I don't think that's a, that's a knock on, on the planning and zoning board. I, I actually appreciate it as much as the applicant here probably doesn't. Um, but, uh, and, you know, I, I hope they continue to be aggressive, uh, you know, on aesthetics and, and maybe they, they can bring, they can bring things to us or to our attention that we need to change, right? And I, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not necessarily sure this is, this is one of them, but, but, you know, the fact that they're being detailed is, is a positive, I think.
Yeah, well, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Pena, next time there's a planning and zoning, uh, meeting, hearing, uh, at least, uh, me personally, uh, if you can, uh, relate to them that they should take this ordinance and they should look at it and, uh, make the changes that they feel, you know, are, are, will be good for our city and then present it to us.
Will do.
Okay?
Thank you. You have anything else or Commissioner?
I had similar comments. Um, that board represents the community as a whole. And if they think that aesthetically, this isn't necessarily pleasing, then as the Vice Mayor stated and the Mayor stated, you know, maybe the ordinance needs some, some tuning, uh, to give, to empower them to be able to have that opinion. Um, but until then, you know, this is within, this is within the laws of our city and, uh, with that being said, you know, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, I think so. I make a, um, second.
All right.
Motion to reverse, second.
You have a motion? We have a motion? We have a second?
Yes, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I hope good luck for you, my friend. We need the business here.
I appreciate it.
Be helpful.
Yeah, we hope to, we hope to, you know, partner with you. Like we've partnered with all our local businesses to make sure that everyone's included and everyone's succeeding, so. And like I told the board members before, we're open from 9 to 6, 7, and you guys can welcome to come in and check us out, uh, anytime you guys want and see what we're doing there, so. You heard about my coffee, didn't you? Trust me, everybody, that's why I, the whole shop is going to come from my coffee at least. That's, that, that's the only business I've been getting so far, but it's gonna come up.
Maybe you're in the wrong business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
All right. Let's go back to the order of the agenda.
Yes, uh, going back to the original order of the agenda, item 11, under new business agenda item, item 11A, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami waiving the requirement for sealed deeds as required by, required by Section 274 of the City Code declaring an emergency due to the time constraints of FERDAP grant 1018 to be voted by a four feet vote of the Mayor and City Commission, authorizing the Office of the City Manager and/or his designate to execute contract with, with playground bus for playground equipment and installation in the Recreation Center playground area to be performed as required by the grant providing for effective date.
So, Mr. Mayor, in your agenda packet, you will find the display of the, uh, playground equipment that we were able to locate. Um, and the, the equipment is in stock. It was as of, I believe, yesterday afternoon. And, uh, if you, um, allow us to move forward with the, with the purchase, we will be signing a purchase order tomorrow. This is, um, one of the expenses associated with the FERDAP grant.
Right, this is, this comes from, well, we approved last, last meeting, correct?
Correct.
Uh, that we need to get done by April?
By April. I would like to get them done by April 20th because the grant expires April 30th.
April 30th, and we have to have it completed in order to qualify the grant.
Completed with photographs of everything that has been done.
All right. Does anyone have any questions?
And, and we did, uh, request other proposals, but there was not a vendor who had the equipment in stock, in stock.
Motion. Second.
You have, you have a question?
Uh, just a comment.
If you hold your motion for a second.
Being that this is in stock, again, this is an urgent timeframe here. So even if we had a better quote, for example, that wasn't in stock, probably wouldn't get here in time anyways.
Correct, sir.
So this, this actually is, is a perfect situation for us.
It is. The total, uh, cost is contemplated in your resolution.
Yeah, we, we had a motion and we had a second, uh, by the Vice Mayor. Uh, can, can we?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Uh, Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, item 11B, presentation of proposal and request for resolution for AMI Engineering for the work in connection with the Standard Operating Procedures Manual as required by the MPDES permit, Office of the City Manager.
Thank you. And we will yield to, um, the City Attorney, the City Engineer on this matter. This is a follow-up to a recent audit that was, uh, basically where we were fined, uh, not fined, but found to be in violation of the, uh, current standards that, um, that are tied to the consent decree. Is that correct?
To the, to our MPDES permit.
Exactly. The National Discharge Pollution...
National Pollutant Discharge Elimination.
System. There you go.
Well, you'll have the floor in a moment. Um, can you read the resolution associated with this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11C, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the City Manager to compensate AMI Engineering for services rendered in the preparation of standard operating procedure to comply with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, FDIP. Audit of the City's National Pollution Discharge Eliminating System in the amount of $7,680. Pay, payment of, for this service shall be funded by the 2022-2023 budgeted and approved Stormwater Enterprise Fund Account 525213, providing for effective date.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
So the background on this is, uh, as a municipality, we're considered what's called a municipal separate storm sewer system and we're operating under a national permit called the MPDES permit. That's a national program for reducing pollutants. Uh, we've been operating under that permit since the early 2000s. Uh, never had an issue. Um, we, you know, we've, we've done everything we have to do to comply with the permit, uh, requirements. Last year was probably the first time we've had a real audit of our, of our, uh, compliance with that permit. Uh, so we had a gentleman come down from DEP, went through our whole system. Uh, the findings pretty much, it wasn't that we weren't doing what we were supposed to because we were. It's that it wasn't being documented properly, the, the way that they were expecting it in the permit. Um, so we were required to put together essentially a, a complete manual of standard operating procedures for, I believe it's about 12 different items within the permit that we have to, uh, document on a, on an ongoing basis that we're inspecting and that we're taking action on if there's issues. Basically, what we're trying to do is eliminate folks from discharging storm water into our system illegally. So if you have parking lots that are not keeping their drainage on site and they're overflowing into our roads, we need to, you know, we need to periodically go and inspect, find them, cite them. So as part of this, we had to basically prepare a manual saying, you know, John, you need to go inspect this on such and such date and here's the report you need to fill out. So we created an entire manual to comply with the audit. It's been submitted to DEP. Uh, we're waiting on comments from that, but that's what, uh, this, uh, this item entails is that preparation and, uh, coordinating with, uh, with DEP to make sure that we're complying with the permit.
Um, if I may, Mayor, let me ask, if I could ask a question to Frank. Will the operating manual also address the logs that have to be kept by your staff?
Correct.
Or your department and the training for, the cross-training for city employees as well?
Yeah, so, yes, it includes, uh, all the requirements for training. It includes the actual, uh, we created forms uh, for each of the individual items that need to be inspected and acted upon. Uh, we created procedures for how they're going to be recorded. Uh, so it's, it was pretty, uh, pretty robust. We, we didn't, we were doing the work. We just weren't actually, uh, you know, do it.
Documenting it, correct.
To their satisfaction.
Or have a book telling us how to do it. Plus, uh, there's also three additional ordinances that we have to bring up here to get so we could put information in the code so we could enforce what we put in the book.
Okay, um, this, this amount, you said you submitted the manual and I'm, I'm sure that it will be approved. But in the event that the comments come back.
This is it.
This is, this is the amount. Okay. All right.
And I, and I would reiterate what Juan said, yes. There's actually three ordinances that, that we're going to have to pass that, that were not on our books, uh, to comply with the permit conditions. So those you'll be seeing. We draft made, we, we prepared drafts of them, submitted them to FDP for their review. Then we'll have our attorney review and, and, uh, move forward.
Okay. So we'll be expecting that. Uh, does anyone have any questions or concerns? Other than that, can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a, and a second?
Yes, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca, Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item, item D, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida authorizing the City Manager to execute change order number five in the amount of $150,200 for that certain contract authorized by Resolution 202037 with Magolc Inc. For the purpose of completing the potable water main improvement phase one project, which is attached here too and made a part of here of as Exhibit A, providing for funding, providing for an effective date.
You want me to take it?
Please.
Um, so this change order, along with the change order on item E, um, they're, they're both, you know, pretty much, uh, the...
know, pretty much the same situation. On change on the change order described in D, this is for work pertaining to the final restoration of the roadway. When we bid out the project, due to our budgeting restrictions on what we had budgeted for phase one B, we had a specific pot of money from FDIP, we ended up having to pull out the final restoration in order to meet our budget and the plan was to do it under the upcoming phase two project, which is ARPA-funded. So we pulled that work out, now we have that money, so we're basically putting the work back in. So it's on item D, it's it's work that would have been done anyway under the next phase, we're just, we have the money now to do it, we have them out there, let's just finish it and be out of 59th Avenue.
That that way you don't have to come back to 59th Avenue.
And that's a similar situation with item E, again, due to due to the, if you if you guys have seen the map on how we're splitting up the phases, it's it's almost like a puzzle because we're already trying to fit into the different pots of money we have. So for phase one B, that was all DEP-funded and due to funding, we had to actually remove three of the, four of the streets that we have to put in mains on in order to meet our budgets for that. Now that we have the ARPA money, we're going to go back and put in four of the lines that actually run from 59th over to 60th Court, just so that we can be done with 59th. So the idea is we're going to do this, this work was all planned to be done under phase two, funded by ARPA, still going to be funded by ARPA, it's just going to be done now by this contractor so that we can finish up 59th Avenue and just move forward and we don't have to go back there, we don't have to dig any more holes, it'll be done. That's the idea.
Okay.
Do you have a realistic timeframe of how long it will take to finish 59th?
So on 59th, we've had a slight, they've actually moved quicker than we had planned, so quick that now where they're waiting on pipe, so they finished basically all the pipe work along 59th Avenue, what we're waiting on now is some pipe material to get here for the the east-west connections that are going to connect over to 60th Court. There's some four-inch HDP pipe that they need to procure, which is part of the change order on E. That pipe has a long lead time because it's, I guess it's in high demand and there's not a lot of it, so we have about an eight-week lead time on that. So there won't be any activity on 59th for about eight weeks until we get that pipe. That work will probably take about a month and a half and then probably another month or so for final restoration, so we're probably looking in total, maybe four months before it's complete, complete, primarily due to that two-month lead time that we have on this pipe.
Yeah, it's out of your control.
Yeah.
So.
Go ahead.
So with this, we will complete from 57th Avenue to 59th?
Correct, and we won't have to go back, so actually, there is a run that we do have to go back on 12th Street, but that won't affect, we've already made provision so that we don't have to actually damage the avenues again.
Now, the next critical stage, we have a 59 to 62, 62nd?
The next phase is is going to be the big one, phase two, which is actually from, it'll be from 60th Court all the way to 65th Avenue, so it'll it'll it'll, that that's the big project that we have right now that we're we're trying to wrap up the final design permit so that we can put that out to bid, and then that's going, that's the big project, so.
That that's will, the money you get from?
That's face, that's the one, right after that, that's phase three.
That's from the that's from the 2 million pot.
The 2 million will basically be?
The 3 million pot we actually haven't put out because we're still negotiating, we're still figuring, we're still?
Yeah.
Getting that money.
Yeah.
So so that that's not even?
This is ARPA money.
That's not even the 3 million yet, this is this is ARPA and the 2 million from?
From DEP.
From from DEP, that we got from the state legislature, the 3 million we got from the federal government, we're still getting, we're still getting it from them, it's it's a process, it's the federal government. I know that we had some promising news a while back when you when you were having those meetings.
Yes, we.
What was, let's let's get a quick update, what was the last conversation we had on that?
Well, we had one conversation this afternoon, we met with Robert Ruano, all of us, Frank, Juan and I attended the meeting and basically it appears that because of the census information that they, that EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency keeps, we will probably be considered for the waiver. Obviously, these funds require match funds from most of their communities, we will probably qualify for a waiver of that match.
So this is a?
Because these dollars cannot be leveraged.
Yeah, but my point, my point is not mechanical how to get the money, my point is with that money, we get to 68 to 66.
With that money, we'll complete essentially the entire north northern part of the city, everything north of 16th Street will be done.
Perfect.
And I believe we may have, from the the pot that we're trying to get now, we'll actually be able to build some south, so.
Perfect, I think we'll get the money because we have a lot of muscle in that, and we have a million people involved with that, so.
Yeah, we have, it's it's, you know, it's one thing to get the money, it's one thing to, another thing to get the money.
Yes.
We will get it, yeah.
No, no, it's it's coming and and I think this is the one time that our, the census under counts is going to help us.
No, the fact that I think we've been able to put stuff in the ground.
Yeah, just to clarify why why that's important to the board, there's there's a provision that says in order to get the full 3 million, you have to add some sort of match, which for us would have been up to 600,000 or whatever it was, but there's a waiver that says if you if you are a certain population socioeconomic demographic, so if your city has a certain, basically, I mean?
Average household income.
Average household household income, that's that's on the lower end, you get a waiver and we for our, because the census was a little bit skewed, usually not in our favor for proportional funds reasons, this is actually helping us when it comes to the waiver.
You need a motion for leave, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, this is in item D, call the rule.
Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioners Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Five zero item passes.
Next item?
Item E, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, authorizing the City Manager to execute change order number six in the amount of 190?
98,600.
Not one, it's 98,600 for that certain contract authorized by resolution 202037 with Magolc Inc. for the purpose of completing the potable water main improvement phase one project, which is attached here to and made part hereof as exhibit A, providing for funding, provided for an effective date.
There's a typo there from my office that we put one in addition there, so.
Noted.
Noted.
You have a motion?
And the funding mechanism again is ARPA money, American Rescue Act.
Okay.
Second, she have a motion?
Commissioner Blanca made a motion, second by Commissioner Suarez, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Five zero item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item F, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami waiving the requirement for CLDs as required by section 274 of the City Code, authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract with Environmental Waste Service Group for the performance of City Y Level One Manhole Inspection and Smoke Test as required by the U.S. EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, consent decree from Miami-Dade County in the amount of $74,154.50, providing for funding from Sanitary Sewer Enterprise Funds Phase One and Phase Two Operating Account and Providing for Effective Date.
Who's going to speak on this item?
So as part of a, the utility that we are, we are under the the same consent decree that the county's on, so we need to basically comply with with the county's requirements. One of the those requirements is we have to perform a sanitary sewer evaluation study every 10 years, we have to do a full study of our system and and we have to do an annual report that that we do and we upkeep that every every year. This past year was our 10 years, so we had to do kind of the full study, as part of that full study, we do nighttime flow testing, which which we did, but we also have to do the smoke testing, which we actually smoke test all the lines and that will identify where we have cracks and leaks. Purpose of this being to find infiltration and inflow into the system because that, you know, that overtaxes our our treatment plans and essentially costs, you know, costs all of us money. So that's a program that that we have to comply with. This testing, we're a little bit behind the eight ball, we should have done this last year, so we were kind of in a hurry to get this done and we we were using our typical contractor that we've used to do this work in the past.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Alonso? It's just curiosity because I know when they happen, maybe neighbors ask about this, the smoke test, you saw a kind of specific color, it's white, black, the smoke that you use for that?
It's white, yeah, it's like, yeah, it's a white smoke, you know, there's cracks, typically the cracks are found on the laterals that go to the houses.
Well, we'd be white, the smoke normal, like a regular.
Yeah, sometimes they'll go up into the house too, but.
Interesting.
Well, well, if they have an illegal connection.
Okay, I was gonna say, should we notice? Okay, that's that's not a, that's not a problem, okay.
I have a similar comment because this was done recently, in the last couple of years in Miami Beach as well, we were getting called nonstop by homeowners that there was smoke in their house or smoke in the street.
That happened last time, yeah.
Is there some sort of public service announcement that gets, okay.
Notice to residents, yes.
Yeah, let's make sure to do that, I do not want to receive as many calls as we normally get on.
Yeah, we'll get, what we'll do is we'll get, you know, we'll get a schedule from them as to where they're going to be and what time and then we'll, you know, we'll do an advance notice.
Yeah, let's make sure we do that. Any other questions or comments?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Patron?
Yes.
Five zero item passes.
Thank you.
Next item, 11G, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, amending and expanding resolution 2020266 whereby the City of West Miami transmitted the five-year transportation plan to Miami-Dade County Office of the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust, which is attached here too as exhibit A, to include pedestrian crosswalk and signalization of Southwest 62nd Avenue and 9th Street, City of West Miami, providing for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Chavez.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Or go ahead, why don't you do this, Commissioner briefly describe what it is and manager describe what this resolution is actually doing.
Okay.
Stay it that way.
So, yeah, so a few months back, we discussed the crosswalk in front of City Hall here, adding some lighting to it to make it safer to cross in the evening, so this is basically formalizing, I'll let the the manager explain it, but I I do also want to add here as well, since we're going to be amending the five-year plan, I would like to see another crosswalk potentially in in an area on 62nd Avenue, maybe 13th Street. The reason for that is if you think about the city, looking at it from an aerial perspective, it's broken up basically into four quadrants, 16th Street, 62nd Avenue, cutting down the center, right? So if you're a pedestrian, which we have, we have sidewalks throughout our entire city, that's one of the biggest draws to our city, that's very pedestrian-friendly, but if, say, you're crossing 62nd or 16th Street, heading from north to south, you know, down on the west side of the city, you have a four-way stop over there, so pedestrians could cross safely there, in front of Savania, they have the light there, and then you can cross in front of City Hall as it currently is, but if you want to cross 62nd Avenue from the east side to the west side, between City Hall, crosswalk and 16th Street, you're basically jaywalking unless you want to walk all the way to 16th Street or in front of City Hall. So I know that there's residents and I'm one of them, that when I go around pushing my baby around, I find myself crossing that street and, you know, it's very wary, you have cars coming in all different directions, so I would like to see a crosswalk in that area as well, not necessarily with the lights, I mean, we could add that to the plan and see where that takes us, but just a general crosswalk.
Something simpler.
Something simple to to give us a location where we can cross. I think the 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 traffic study that was done in 2020, when I looked at it, it showed there, I think it was like on 11th Street, that it showed doing a three-way stop, I don't even think a stop sign is necessary, just a simple crosswalk to add another area where pedestrians feel safe crossing.
Yeah, I was going to mention, the study that we did a few years back did identify potential stop condition at a, like, it was 12th or 13th.
Right.
It was basically in.
On 62nd, on 62nd Avenue.
Really?
Yeah, it had a, it had a roundabout, I think, on 15th, which is kind of close to 16th Street.
Yeah.
And then a three-way stop at that area, 13th, 14th Street.
That's right.
Okay, Madam Manager, what does this resolution actually do?
What this resolution does is put the county on notice, the Office of the CITT, that we would like to amend our five-year transportation plan to include two crosswalk areas, one with signalization and the other one just a simpler crosswalk in the intersection that Commissioner Chavez has just proposed. It will probably trigger a limited study on the part of the county, we may have to request that, or we may have, they may tell us to do it ourselves and submit it to them. Am I correct, Frank, on this?
Likely, that's probably what we'll have to do.
Yeah, they'll come, they'll ask us to commission that study. Basically, any project funded with use of PTP money for transit or transportation has to be made part of the five-year transportation plan.
Right, so this is adding into the five-year plan?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know how specific we have to be, we could just say?
A limited study is what I've heard that they do in specific areas, that target grids or, you know, just specific areas.
But the study would be for the study of an additional crosswalk between 16th and 8th Street.
Correct.
We don't have to really say where.
You wouldn't need to put it for, right, exactly.
So we couldn't just use the the plant, the study was done with the three-way stop?
The issue with that, so that study was, that study was more for the traffic, so we could use that study if we wanted to pursue a stop condition, we would probably have to do a little bit more detail, but that study is a good basis, in this case, it's more pedestrian, so it's it's not.
Well, we're on the subject and I don't want to get off too much, and I'll ask for any motions in a second, but while we're on this topic of the traffic study that we did, the, how much is a ballpark figure and I'm not asking for anyone to, you know, you know, I'm not asking for a specific, but a ballpark figure on roundabouts, the construction installation, go.
I think nowadays, we're probably looking at?
50, okay.
We're probably looking even higher.
So it's actually?
Between 50 and 100.
So so so, for example, I'm sure you've seen in Coral Gables, the the speed tables, they're they're brick, they're paved, whatever it is, speed tables, those, I, Mayor Lago gave me, their numbers are significantly cheaper, right?
Oh, absolutely.
They're significantly cheaper. Now, do you, what are, what the study, the study asked called for roundabouts, was that because we said roundabout is what we use as traffic commerce or because they said a roundabout is the most effective commerce for this area?
I think for, you know, for our city and the way that the grid is laid out and kind of the spacing between between our blocks, we always lean towards the traffic commerce. I think also the feedback we got at our public workshops was very negative against the speed tables.
Really?
If I recall, we have, we have some minutes from that. So I think, yeah.
Because I I've always heard arguments against speed bumps, right?
That's the problem, I don't think, I don't think folks.
Right, the only people understood what speed table was versus speed bump, right?
So you tell them a speed table, there's, so I I do recall it being kind of negative against it.
Okay.
Mayor, and another thing that we?
And we had a lot of folks at those meetings.
And another thing that we discussed, you not only want to lower, get, get motorists to become more conscientious about, you know, lowering their speed, whatever device you use out there, you wanna make it pedestrian-friendly as well. And so it was determined at the time that the commerce would probably, uh, be, uh, work for both motorists and pedestrians, and that they would be aesthetically pleasing, and also they would, um.
You're saying the commerce, you, you mean, you mean the.
The street commerce instead of, uh, speed tables.
Circles.
Circles, I'm sorry.
And, and as we know, circles have their own controversy in this.
Right, yes.
So, uh, we won't get into that tonight. Um, does anyone have any questions back on the resolution?
One more.
No, no, I'm not even referring to the south, I'm just, I'm referring to the, the circles themselves. Go ahead.
Uh, my understanding is that you want to add an additional crosswalk to the resolution.
Uh, i- is that, is that what you're requesting, or are you, are you talking about, ma- make your request?
Yes, Mister Mayor, so I, I do wanna add an additional crosswalk to this resolution, and to that crosswalk, it includes the signage yield for pedestrians. Not, not a lit-up sign, just kinda similar tone, it's out here currently.
Well, the, the signage that would, that would accompany any crosswalk.
Right, right, right.
I would then suggest that, uh, the Commission, the body of the Commission approve the, uh, amending of the heading of the resolution as well as the resolution, so we, you can vote on it.
So, wh- if, if, if we make, if we make a motion to approve, please make a motion as amended to include the additional crosswalk. Uh, does anyone have any questions or comments?
The, I just wanna say the reason I came up with this is because Commissioner Blanca almost ran me over on Sixty-Second and Thirteenth Street.
We'll, we'll strike that from the record.
You can strike that, that was a joke, that was a joke.
We have a motion, we have a, wait, um, are you, motion as amended?
As amended.
Motion as amended, second as amended.
Second.
Go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca? Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, item H, report by the mayor in reference to proposed location for the Pine Roplan Butterfly Garden at Cooper Park as part of the interlocal agreement between the City of West Miami and Fairchild Botanical Gardens Connect to Protect Program by Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Um, on this, can we get, uh, Mister Penna? Mister Penna, can, I, I, there was a meeting that was between myself, the Manager, and Mister Penna. Uh, so you guys were there, you guys can explain what the location we're looking at is. Um, to be clear, again, this is to give a blessing to the location. With the location and with, with the measurements that Mister Penna is providing to Fairchild, they will come back with a, a, a budget. That, this is not approving any money. Uh, the idea is to get the entire thing sponsored. Um, so any money would, any money and budget would come back to the Commission, uh, before anything is decided. This again is just taking the next step, looking at location. Uh, whichever you want to take it on the, on the location, Mister Penna, I think, you know.
Mister Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, this area is the, uh, northwest corner, um, of Cooper Park, where we know it as the mound on the back of the park there. Where there's, right now, there's two coconut trees and it's about four feet elevated. That area there just serves as a green area for the park. Uh, we walked it with the folks from, uh, Fairchild and, uh, I forget, what's it called, Connection?
Connect to Protect.
Connect to Protect.
Connect to Protect. And that's where they would like to install the, the native trees of the rockline, uh, uh, trees that are natural to Florida. And also a, other trees that are, uh, attractive to butterflies to create it like a butterfly garden type of setting in that area. Uh, it's about forty-three hundred square feet of the park. Uh, it's really, just sits there emptied right now with green, uh, greenery. Uh, I believe that the proposal that they wanna do will create an atmosphere where the kids and everybody else will be curious about the types of plants that are plant, planted there and why they're, uh, Florida native and, uh, educate the kids on what actually is good for Florida versus other trees that are not good for Florida.
So, so this area, as we all know Cooper Park very well, right, is next, is in the packet, it's, uh, you have, you have the shaded area with the trees. Um, and then right there is where I believe the Little Free Library is gonna be placed, um, which is actually very nice. We were sitting out there for our meeting. Uh, recommended actually if you're, if you have time of the day. But, uh, then there's a hill that has been there for a long time. I think longer than Jupiter's been in the city, so it's a very long time. Um, so, and this, this, uh, this, this hill is, has these two palm trees on it. I think the idea would be to relocate the palm trees to.
One of them we're gonna remove, which is, uh, expired on its time, uh, worth planting somewhere else, and the other one, we are gonna locate it to where the other coconut trees are in the park.
And then the idea then is to put the, the, uh, the garden on this hill, uh, and then have a walkway from the shaded area of the trees that goes through and meets up with the walkway that we currently have. Um, and in the middle of that, on the top of that hill, surrounded by plants and a kind of consecrated area, would be a limestone bench. Um, that would be surrounded by a butterfly garden as well. Um, and this is, this would all be sort of on that hilltop that today is sort of kind of an awkward, uh, awkward little part of the park, 'cause we can't do anything on it.
Plus, the garden would be cordoned off with, uh, uh, wood and ropes going around so that the, nothing gets trampled in the areas that you're not supposed to go into.
Right, go ahead.
Will the, uh, the native trees, will they be labeled? Will they have a?
Yes. They all come labeled and QR codes and everything else, so you could connect with, uh, Fairchild Tropical Garden and the information on it.
Oh, great.
Yeah, the idea would be to do a planting with the community, bring the kids out, bring, you know, uh, they actually, they actually prefer, um, having a community planting than having a professional planting. Um, the, the plants don't need to go very deep, uh, so they, they actually, uh, they, they've done it with us as, as little as four-year-olds in the past, so, you know, they direct them and, and they, and they, and they do it. So this again, uh, this is a next step, go ahead.
How high is gonna be the hill?
Well, the hill's already there. That, that, this is the, this is the hill that, uh, this is hill next to, next to that, that shaded area.
Is there, is?
It's a.
Yeah, the hill's about three feet, uh, above the, uh, street elevation.
It's about three feet high.
Yeah.
Still, I thought it was.
Yeah, it's not a mountain.
It's a mound.
I thought they were going to make it all.
It's, it, it. It's a Miami hill. There you go.
Is there an advantage on having it on top of the mound?
So the, the, the initial location we're looking at, we're on the other side of the pathway. Um, the reason they don't wanna do it there is we, we've planted young oak trees there. Um, and they don't wanna disrupt the oak trees, 'cause they, they think they're assets of the park. Um, but also, the, the plants need a lot of sunlight.
Yeah, the environment is a dry environment for that type of park, and that would be a perfect situation for it.
So, so it, it can't be too near the trees on the oak side, 'cause those are gonna grow, it's gonna shade it, and it, and then the, the hill actually doesn't get the shade from, from these trees on the, this big tree, like this very shaded area, so it ended up being a really good spot for direct sunlight that the plants need. So again, this is just a blessing on the spot. Any concerns, you know, bring them up and we'll, we'll work through them, but, uh, we're not spending any money at the moment, and we hope to get it all sponsored and, and, uh, and so this is just, uh, this is, we don't need a vote, we just need a, a yea or nay on the spot, and any concerns be brought up, uh, be brought up, uh, now or, you know, as we go through the process, okay?
It's a great location, I think.
And then, of course, if you, if you can, we, we, this is the next step, so we need to get the budget back from them. Um, the, anybody who we know in the community, um, that would like to, uh, sponsor and have a permanent little display when they put the plaques up and, and have their employees or themselves involved in the planting for their own goodwill and, uh, and media, I mean, we'd be happy to, to, uh, talk with them, so keep in mind, keep in mind, uh, people in the community. Uh, as we go through the process, we'll, we'll make sure that the budget goes out to everybody, so we can see what we're talking about. It's not a, it's not a large number. Um, but it could be a good opportunity for anybody who wants to help us out in the community, that wants to do environmentally friendly things and, and, uh, and, you know, benefit from the goodwill. So, uh, with that, I guess, yea or nay?
Yes.
Yea?
Quick question, Mister.
Is she all right?
So this is the final location, correct?
This is, right, this is the final location, and, and we'll keep moving through the process, and we'll keep bringing things back, and we'll keep bringing updates, and we'll keep getting things approved as they, as they pop up.
So would it be wise to wait to put the little library or?
Well, um, actually, we were talking about that, uh, I, I think that the area we would put the library was in the shaded area.
Correct. The library will go where we have the, the tables now set up.
Right.
In that center area in front of one of the trees there. It's a very shaded area, very cool, very pleasant.
And don't have a direct path.
Right, it will have a direct path, but, but we don't need to wait. I, I think regardless on this, on this garden.
We can start the, the little library project.
I think we can, we can move forward on that.
Yes.
Alrighty. Uh, next item.
Next item would be item twelve on the Consent Agenda items. You have two items, Mister Mayor.
I have two items? Oh, I, we have two, we have two items.
We have two items.
Um, I see one is sponsored by Commissioner Chavez. Do you have any intention to pull that item? Would you like to pull it?
To discuss it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, 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 uh, item A, is, is everyone in favor?
Yes.
That's a little consent? We're, we're pulling, we're pulling item B. Are all in favor of the Consent Agenda items, Consent Agenda items excluding item B? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye, aye. Alright, go ahead, Commissioner.
So this past Tuesday, uh, the mayor helped to set up an event with the Zionist Organization of America. It was at our rec center. It's the oldest pro-Israel group in the United States. Their National President, Morton Klein, was here to discuss some of the issues that, you know, the Jewish people are having, obviously throughout the world, but additionally to what we're, uh, witnessing here in the United States as well. Just the other day, I think it was two days ago, there was a hundred and fifty anti-Semitic Ziploc bags that were thrown around West Palm Beach. Um, we had that same incident happen to us in Miami Beach. I say us, 'cause I'm a firefighter in Miami Beach, about a year ago. It was actually January of twenty-twenty-two. So this is still an issue that we're seeing. Um, we have a temple here in our city of West Miami as well. It's on Eighth Street and Sixty-fourth Avenue about. Um, so this is something that, that we learned while we were there during that discussion. We learned a lot, and there is a bill, House Bill two sixty-nine. It's being sponsored or co-sponsored by State Representative Vicky Lopez. I'm gonna read a little bit of the bill. It's long, um, it's in our packet, but I'll, I'll just read a portion of it. It's basically a bill that's providing for a reclassification of certain offenses, providing criminal penalties, requiring that certain violations be reported as hate crimes. It prohibits stalking of certain individuals, prohibits willful and malicious defacement, injury, or damage to certain property, and it's prohibiting the projection of certain images onto buildings or other property without permission. So increasing criminal penalties, it's gonna increase penalties from misdemeanors to, hold on a second. Right, it's gonna be, it's gonna be increased from a misdemeanor to a, a first-degree misdemeanor to a third-degree felony if, if it's considered a hate crime. So House Bill two sixty-nine is something that I want to get behind, which is why I brought this resolution forward. I know that the mayor, uh, helping to put up that event together, he also wants to get behind this to make sure that other municipalities also start to put forward resolutions to make sure that not only Jewish people, but any individual that wants to, you know, practice their faith, that they feel safe to do so, and our community can be one of the first to back this bill.
Yeah, that, that light, that, uh, that project, that projected, uh, part of that bill was in, uh, reaction to, I don't know if anyone saw the news. They were projecting a swastika onto a, a building, uh, in, I don't know if it was in Jacksonville or, or wherever it was, but that light pollution started becoming an issue. Uh, so they're addressing it now. Um, can we get a motion on this, Commissioner? Okay, uh, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner, do you want to second your item?
Second.
Okay, uh, motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And go to the order. Anything for the go-to-the-order? Anyone?
No.
No one? Motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.